And we will hand it off to Dr. Battle to get us started.
All right, thank you, Chair. At this time, our Chief Financial Officer, Jorge Robles, will walk us through our budget presentation. Just as a reminder, the initial presentation to the board came in March. We've had our community engagement session since then, and so Jorge is going to remind us again what's a part of this proposed FY26 budget. Following that, we'll take a look at our Nutrition Services Fund budget, as well as our federal programs budget, which is now strategic investments under our Strategic Investments Department. So Chief Robles, I'll let you take it away.
Thank you, Dr. Battle, Finance Committee Chair of Bikini, Chair Player, members of the board. Pleasure to be with you again. And as Dr. Battle referenced, we'll do a refresher of what we had already discussed back in March, so that you are up to speed again as you vote on the regular meeting consent. As we know, the why for the budget and the resources that we're asking for next year is the results that our students are achieving because of the resources that we're putting forward at our schools. And that's really what drives the way that we are prioritizing resources. So love to spend all the time recalling the celebrations, but in the interest of time, I'm going to move forward on all the great accomplishment. And this is a work that, you know, we're grateful for the support of this board that's got us here in terms of the resources available, as well as the city and the community as a whole, and supporting what we do and our teachers and school leaders for everything that they do every day for our students. The priorities that you set for this year are what guided the construction of this proposed budget.
Just pull the mic up a little bit, so.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
All right. I'm going to lean in a little bit. So the four priorities that you set out for this year is what guided that we discussed last time, which is to preserve continuity of operations, make sure that we continue to invest in the strategic investments. This is specifically for this year, FY26, to move those investments in Essor to the continuity of operations, our strategic employment compensation, and the new priority around comprehensive safety and security planning. And there it goes. So as I shared with you last time, we bucketed the investment for discussion among those four priorities. And first, on the continuity of operations, the big investments are one to help us offset inflationary and contractual rate increases. As we discussed last time, we have a growing population of multilingual learners and exceptional students who need the resources. And there's, you know, budget to actually be responsive in that space. The classroom associate strategy being fully implemented, something that we're excited about, which is moving the textbook adoption to the continuity of operations. We discussed that last time as a critical need. What we are also excited that we can continue to do as a priority is to include the step increase for our employees in the continuity of operations. So that's included here. And then there's a number of additional small projects and programs. In this case, excuse me, about half of it is the adjustment to SBB that corresponds to the increase that happened on the per pupil amount at the state level. Esser Bridge, these are the strategies that we have been funding now for two to three years that have been critical in helping us achieve the outcomes that we have discussed in the past. So again, not going to go through it, but these are critical investments that we feel are important for us to continue to invest and fund for FY26. And the strategic employee compensation, as we discussed last time, there has been a lot of work over the years on investing on our educators, making sure that we're able to recruit and retain the best that there is. And we are essentially continuing to make that a priority for FY26. And as a reference is what the cost of a 1% COLA is. And as I said, the step increase is already included in the operating fund, so that would be part of our continuity of operations as we have done in previous years. And the last priority is around safety and security. As we discussed last time, the focus has been on implementation around high schools. The rest of the amounts here are for reference on the costs associated with implementation across other ed levels. And we did discuss aspirational budget last time. Nothing has really changed in terms of the revenue outlook. And we await May 1st when the mayor is going to actually communicate what the funding is for next year. And I'm going to actually skip federal programs. We're going to talk about in detail around this. So next critical date for the budget process is on May 1st, when the mayor communicates his budget. And then ultimately, all this will be finalized at the end of June when Metro Council votes on that budget. So let's talk about the proposed fiscal year 26 federal programs and grants budget. This is a little bit of an eyesore if you're looking just at the slide. So we printed it out. But what is included here are both the federal grants that we receive. Some of the big ones are obviously Title I, Title II, IDEA, that right now, these are projected amounts based on what TDOE has indicated the level of funding will be. That level of funding has been, right now, set at the same level as this year for next year. So that's what you see here captured. And we also have the state grants, which essentially, we don't anticipate much variation from this year. There are some carryover amounts from prior grants that are reflected as well. But essentially, of the 143 million that we were expecting to receive, about 40 million, 43 million are state grants, and the other 100, as we discussed in the past, are federal grants that we should be receiving. And the main difference from this year, FY25 to FY26, is that the sun setting of SR3, which essentially had another $37 million that we leveraged this year, that are not going to be there for next year. On child nutrition, again, another slide filled with information. Obviously, here on the left is all the revenue items anticipated for next year that we budgeted. And on the right side are all the expenses. The total expected budget is a little bit over $68 million. That's an increase of approximately $6 million. That increase is mainly driven by the fact that the team expects to serve more meals, which is a great thing. And so there are costs associated with purchasing more food, more equipment, and supplies to fulfill that. And there is an expectation to get to build a reserve of about 1 million, which is something that we want intentionally to do year over year, that, you know, as we plan the expenses and the revenues, that you can build that reserve for incidentals, you know, things, there's wear tear in equipment and different things that we need to replace. So that is a very fast refresher of all the information that we had discussed in March. And I'll pause now for any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much. I am going to open it up to questions, but before we get to that, I have one quick question for you. I know we're only three months into the new administration and the talk around the Department of Education and federal funding. Do we anticipate any loss in federal funding that we've indicated here that we may have to look at for the next upcoming school year at this point?
At this point, we don't. So the big amounts on the federal level are the formula grants. Those are appropriated by statute, you know, set by Congress. Right now, there isn't any indication that that should change. I think that the, what's still left to be seen is what actions the U.S. Department of Ed might take around feeling that we're not like, you know, that they're not fulfilling requirements on some of the things. But the funding is, we expect the same.
Thank you. Board Member Tyler?
Um, huh? Oh, we're good? Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So are we in discussions with anybody else in the event that funding for food in particular gets slashed? Is there any, do we have partners that we've been reaching out to? Are we creating backup plans is my thought? Because I was thinking the same lines. Obviously, we don't know what's going to happen at this point, but I think that we need to be aware that there could be an immediate loss of a substantial chunk of money, especially not just for food, but also for Title II, Title III funding. And those are a significant chunk of this budget. And so are we making backup plans?
So the, if I understand your question, do we have contingency plans in case those events? I mean, that, we're always scenario planning. Obviously, if we were to find ourselves in a situation, there wouldn't be easy path forwards. But, you know, we obviously evaluate different potential scenarios. But like I said, at this point, at least for FY26, those funds have been appropriated by Congress. So the expectation is, and what I've heard is consistent with other states, that that will be available.
So, and if I can add to that, if the board recalls two operating budgets ago, no-cost meals for our students were approved as a part of our operating budget. So, you know, while things are happening, so there could, I mean, it would have to be a domino effect of federal funding in addition to state funding, in addition to what could happen locally. There's lots of talks about potential recession. Like, a combination of those things happening could have ultimately an impact on our budget. But we're fortunate that our school board has approved no-cost meals as a part of our operating budget. Outside of that, the only kind of challenge is that there are significant changes with the CEP program that does allow us to offer reduced costs based upon students who are eligible. If we start to see changes with regards to that formula and how that's funded, it could ultimately. But right now, it appears based upon the way that we leverage our operating dollars to cover no-cost meals, we should be able to pending some catastrophic event taking place.
Unfortunately, CEP is, you're awarded for four years, the classification. So it would have to be, you know, a complete overhaul if that were to happen.
And then just looking at the budget itself, if we're looking at the safety and security measures, when we're looking at the numbers next to the high schools, middle schools, and elementary schools, is that a continuation of the funds only and not including the new funds that we just put in for the high school? Or does that include the new funds that we?
So currently, we leveraged nonrecurring funds by way of a grant that was approved a year or so ago by council to begin the initial implementation in high schools. However, what you see there is a recurring cost year over year. As a reminder, when we think about that, the equipment, the up, keeping that equipment up to speed, the software that's needed, all the operating costs are still needing to be a part of our operating budget to maintain those systems year over year.
So that does include that?
Yes.
That was my question. Okay. Just want to make sure that that was inclusive
Yes.
of that. And then also, the school-based, school-determined needs, that 12 million, where we're talking about the Esser Bridge, I just want to, I think this is correct, but I just want to double check. That is above and beyond their basic needs, like as far as like, we know we have X number of teachers, we know we have. So that 12 million would be above and beyond that for something else?
Yes and no. So we look at this portfolio of funds as strategic investments as a whole, although the funding source might be different. So they have their student-based budgeting weight, they have their title funds, and then they also have their bridge spiral funds. All of that is driven by our student unique learning needs, particularly economically disadvantaged weights for the Esser Bridge. And so while the source may be different, they look at it as one portfolio of investments to make sure that they're meeting all of their basic needs and additional layer supports within the school.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Board Member Elrod?
Thank you. I have several questions. I'm going to start with the nutritional budget, if I may. So my first question, I guess my first thing is a statement. Just to piggyback on what Dr. Battle said, we are lucky to be the only school system in the state that provides no-cost lunches. And I know that it's something that us as a board have highly prioritized. And so I know it's something that we want to make sure that we're protecting. My understanding when looking at hunger-free schools and campaigns that have happened across the nation, that a lot of times, à la carte sales and adult-paid meals, as we have it listed, sometimes help supplement that cost. So I'm just paying more attention to it this year than I might usually. And I feel like you said something when we were doing that transition into the nutritional budget about à la carte meals, Chief Robles, and I missed it. So did you make a, like, is it, is that a typical amount of à la carte money? Or is that, I thought you said it was more than we anticipated.
It might have been my accent. I did not speak to à la carte specifically.
My apologies. My apologies. Then I missed what you said in that transition. So.
So what I did say about next year's child nutrition budget is that the increase from this year to the next
Yes.
is about $6 million. The vast majority of that increase is driven by serving additional meals, the higher volume of meals being served overall, like kids' meals. So that means that the team needs to budget for more food, more supplies, more equipment to provide those meals.
Got it. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I apologize. Then I just want to make sure I understand what the top line is, the USDA meal reimbursement, breakfast and lunch, because it's our largest reimbursement. Is that from, is that the CEP amount? Or is that a different amount of money there?
So it is, it is a reimbursement that we get, you know, when you claim the meals. And because you're, we're part of the CEP, then you get a specific rate for that program.
Okay. So it's a combination, really? Or it is only CEP?
It is. Right now, all schools are CEP, right? So it's all CEP.
That's what I thought. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I just wanted to make sure that I understood it correctly. My next question is about the budget presentation. Is there any change from this presentation from March 25th? Is there anything I need to call? Okay. The thing that I noticed is still in here from the 25th is that the pension, certificated and support pension is TBD, and certificated and support health insurance is still TBD. I apologize, but can you remind us of when we think that those things might be decided upon? I know some of that is out of our control, but do we have a timeline that we're waiting on that for?
I think we're pretty close to having that determined. Some of that, well, most of it is not in our control, actually, under our purview. So once we are able to confirm, we'll get those added to the budget. But we're right on the cusp of being able to provide that information.
In some cases, the rate increases have been approved, and then we have to calculate with an updated employee file and making sure that we have the most updated protection for next year, so that we bring all that back together once we understand the revenue piece as well.
Okay. Okay. Lastly, I just wanted to give a compliment. I noticed, I sent to a constituent, they were asking a bunch of budget questions, and I appreciated that the presentation from March 25th was already on our website. And so I was able to send that to her, and she's already replied back with a bunch more questions for me. So I love that, and I appreciated that it was there and that we are transparent with this information, since budget is always a popular conversation. And thanks.
Board Member Young?
Thank you. So let me start by asking for a little grace as I try and wrap my head around the budget process from this side of town. I, I guess, I'm a little thrown, because when we received our agendas the other day, it said that we would be approving a budget request tonight, and that the budget would be provided to us. And so I'm, I see the nutrition budget, but I don't see an operational budget. And I guess even, and I understand not every number is known at this point, but do we have at least that top line number of kind of where we're at? Because I know we're kind of, if you want to fill in the gaps, I think you know where I'm going with it.
Absolutely. So several years ago, we kind of re-envisioned our operational budget process. Part of that was because, quite frankly, there was this question out there of like, what does it mean to be fully funded? And I mean, just so many kind of abstract questions and ideas out there around what does it take to actually invest in our school districts so that our young people have what they deserve, and our educators have the supports that they need. And so by way of that, we started building out this aspirational budgeting tool, I guess, to really communicate what those investments entail. It empowers and gives the mayor, and then by way of the council, an opportunity to see exactly what those investments are. Because what's behind this is alignment to our focused outcomes, alignment to our strategic plan, and our theories of action of what these investments will do to move the needle forward on behalf of our students. We had somewhat of an antiquated process in the past where my team would spend 60, 90 days, just like trading numbers on the what ifs. And so this gives us an opportunity to share this presentation with the mayor, share this presentation with council, us to actually get a firm investment number, and then demonstrate how those investments will help us accelerate the needle, given the focused outcomes that we have for our school district. So it has been really efficient. It has created a lot of transparency around where we are and where we're trying to go. So the board, at this point in time in the year, has approved the budget presentation as our budget to communicate our aspirations and our goals. And then we'll come back and revise it and put that to the actual budget document, like the examples you've called out, after the mayor has conducted his State of Metro, and the council has taken up their budget. So you will get a finalized budget document once we receive those investments.
Thank you. And so I guess, is there, so are we giving a number, though, at least to the mayor for his placeholder for May 1? Or, and then, because I guess we send this over, and this isn't a number, and I'm still, I'm not, I'm missing, there's a dot, I'm not quite connected.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Dr. Battle.
That's okay. No, this is, this is great. So what we've tried to do is be really clear in communicating and putting this plan together based upon the priorities of the school board. So you'll see those four buckets. Under each bucket, you'll see key investments there. We have really encouraged everyone not to just take that number and add it up. Because depending on how we invest in those particular strategies, one could outweigh the other, right? So when it comes to continuity of operations versus what might be in the aspirational budget. And so you see the key investments under each category. Again, we don't total it, because we want to be clear with the mayor, Metro Council, and the community at large, based upon the investments we can fund, here's what you can expect in overall improvement. So we actually advise against trying to add that number, because that gives us an opportunity to be clear about which investments are actually landing in the final and approved budget. I know it's a bit different, but a few years ago, part of our challenge was our ability to really communicate our key strategies, and then being able to communicate their return on investment on behalf of the city, given the work happening in the organization.
Thank you. And I, I acknowledge, maybe not all of my colleagues at here will agree with this sentiment, but when that number comes back, I guess my only fear is I don't want the mayor and council to feel that they get to pick and choose how we get to spend our money. Okay? Because we are elected officials in our own right, and they write the check, and we get to decide how to spend it. And so if for whatever reason, and I don't have a crystal ball, I don't know what the talks are on that side of town at the courthouse, but if for whatever reason, we feel like the money they've allocated towards a COLA, for example, is not what we feel is appropriate, I hope we don't feel obligated to do what they do. I think we have an obligation to take care of our employees, and it's their obligation to take care of their employees. And so I just want to stress that, and also want to point out that our employees were shorted a couple of years ago. And we, we still owe them for that. And so if that means that maybe some of the priorities that council thinks, or the mayor thinks they would like to fund, that they think is great in our budget, I think it's time that if we didn't feel that that money was there, we have a tough conversation about our priorities and make sure that our employees' compensation is brought to the front. If it means, yeah. So wanted to get that out there. And that's not directed at you as much
Absolutely.
as to, that's more of a political thing than
Yeah, absolutely. And what you'll see in this budget is our priorities.
Right.
Right? And so everything that we're communicating through these documents are our priorities.
Correct.
If they're not, then that's not what we're advocating for. But it does help just as a communication tool, because when you're talking about whether it be employee compensation, we've had that conversation, I share that sentiment, when you think about the investments in community achieves, or advocacy centers, or restorative practice assistance, we also need to be really clear that a lack of investment keeps us from really implementing key programming services, supports for our children, and the compensation, strategic compensation that's needed for our employees. So agreed. But what you see in this presentation are our priorities and our priorities alone. We have been in a space before where there have been attempts to fund things that were outside of this. And again, I appreciate the partnership with the board on recommunicating that and investing in the places that we feel most appropriate for our organization. So thank you for sharing your feedback.
Board Member Player?
And as a former board chair, I also remind the public and to Member Young that
Budget Chair.
Budget Chair, sorry. Yeah, Budget Chair. Whoops. Floyd and Swift. Not trying to be former, not trying to be former. That there's also still a maintenance of effort, and that we, the current budget is the baseline that we do, and we can't go beyond that. We can't go below that. And so everything that we're presenting now is also increasing what we're doing. But also be mindful of, the base starts from this fiscal year budget, and we go from there to move on and to do that. And to echo Dr. Battle's sentiment, I think it's also really important, as you said, we determine how we allocate the funds and resources, but as other organizations, the entities come and advocate from council for things in the educational realm, that we clearly state what our priorities are, our priorities are, and not what outside entities think it should be or could be, and misdirect those funds instead of what we should do.
Any other questions? Board Member Block?
Not to be too, like, reductive on this, but just to reiterate, our priorities, as we have them here, are continuity of operations, which means that base amount of our last year's funding, plus inflation or whatever. Sorry, that's so technical, Chief Robles. And then these continuing strategic investments, which is Esser, Esser Bridge, continuing to fund that, then employee compensation, which we also feel strongly about, and also the conference of safety and security planning. So that's like our base, what we're asking for, is all that stuff. Okay, I'm just double checking, reiterating. Yeah, okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Nope. All right. Thank you, Mr. Robles, Chief Robles. We appreciate it. And Dr. Battle. If we have no other questions, we will go ahead and conclude this meeting. Thank you. Meeting is not concluded. I apologize. Just kidding.